But we don't have Karen yet. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We are doing our meeting by a program called Zoom. It's all electronic. We are not meeting together, but all in separate locations in accordance with what is required for the COVID-19 or coronavirus, as it's commonly called. So we do note that we have a quorum present. I believe, do we now have all council members?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, all our council members are present, and of course, our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Isaac, and our City Recorder, Nicole Cammack, and so we will get going. Let's see. Our opening ceremony, I've been informed that the person preparing that has opted not to do one, and on this electronic format, that doesn't concern me too much. So we will pass that. It's kind of hard to stand and do the pledge electronically. With that, then, we go to our minutes of April 14th, our last council meeting. If I could get a motion on the minutes in a second.
Move for approval of the minutes?
Second.
Properly before us. And I don't see anyone waving any hands wanting to talk about it, so we'll just place it for vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. And if you're no, please start waving your hands or something, so don't see anything. With that, then, we have next on our agenda a proclamation declaring April 24th of this year as Arbor Day in West Valley City. This particular proclamation is one that we have done a number of years, and it is essentially the same proclamation each year. We, as a city, have adopted this process in support of Arbor Day and in planting trees and so forth. So but again, because we're electronic, no one was assigned to read that. We will just, it is attached to our agenda online, and anyone can read that and be aware of our support of Arbor Day here in West Valley City. Next, we have our comment period, and I believe we have at least one individual signed up. So the same requirements here, as in our normal meeting of five minutes and maximum a half hour, I don't think we'll get close to half hour. But with that, Nicole, do we have someone online to participate?
Yes, sir, we have Jim Beesock. And Mr. Beesock, you are now able to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I will always try to be at least one person, so at least you'll have somebody listening to you. Once again, I want to bring up the city properties and the need to get these properties fixed, as code enforcement is still working, and they are out there dinging property owners. And as of May 1st, the moratorium goes off, so then the landscaping and stuff comes up. I bring up, for example, this is only one building, the Community Preservations Building. There's outside storage, there, there's solid waste, and there's trash at this building. Like I said last week, more than a year ago, Mr. Morris was informed of this, and it's been several times throughout the last year that other citizens have brought it up to him in his ALJ hearings. Enough of that. The West Valley City app, we need to have more information put out to the public. I don't know if that's something that's put out totally wide. I have it. And when people contact me about code enforcement stuff, I says, we'll use the app. A lot of people don't know it. I don't know if it's totally out to the public yet, but if it is, maybe that'll be something good to put on the green sheet or on the Facebook sites. And then the last thing, you guys are voting on the Auto Center thing tonight. I hope you guys turn it down. Planning, planning doesn't want it, and I don't think it's the proper place for it. So that's all I have. Good to see you all.
Thank you. Nicole, is there anyone else online?
Oh, we do not. There is a couple of members wishing to speak regarding the public hearing, but not for the open public comment period.
Okay, we'll get to them in here in just a few moments. Seeing that there's no more general public comment, we'll move on. Mr. Isaac, any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Any council members have any comments? Seeing none, we'll go next to our public hearing. This is regarding application ZT-2-2020 filed by Eric Hoffman, a zone text change to our city code to add automobile emission centers as a conditional use in the residential business zone on properties over one acre. Included in this will be ordinance 20-18, which would be the vehicle if we were to approve that. This is an interesting change. It is to allow, in an area where currently it is not allowed, to have a automobile emission center. We know that for sure this would impact property. Boy, what was it, 32? Something?
See, sir.
On 47? No, wait a minute. Yeah, 4700 South? I gotta remember now where it was.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm trying to find that address myself here. It's on.
It's that property east of the Cypress Credit Union.
Yes, there on 32nd West and, or close to the corner there. This would be the property just east of that, and the piece of ground that it would specifically for sure impact is that empty lot next to Cypress Credit Union, plus the next prop, what appears to be a separate property, the one with the house on it. And this particular request went through the Planning Commission, was denied. It has been appealed to the council. And it would include automobile emissions center, which means a test only for business for emissions, inspections, and registration renewals, excluding automobile service. So it would not be a repair shop or anything like that. So that is the issue before us. With that, then, I will open the public hearing for this issue. And my understanding is we do have a couple of people lined up. So Nicole, will you bring the first one on?
I believe we actually have both the applicant Eric Hoffman and Fred Cox there on the same line, so I will just unmute the one, and they should both be able to speak, so.
All right, thank you.
You guys are good to go.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I appreciate your time and your willingness to discuss this issue. This is Eric Hoffman, the business owner. As a business owner, I'm lucky enough to be one of the businesses that is essential during this time of crisis, which I am very grateful for. As I have many employees trying to keep them employed during this crazy times. At this current location where I am at, I am trying to move my location as I am, have almost lost my location to the current landowners. They want to tear this specific place down and build something else. So I'm trying to move quickly to a place that I can move my business to. Grateful thing about this location is it is just down the street from where I currently am. Right there on 47th Southeast of the bank, as you guys have stated.
2570.
20, no, 35.
No, but this one is.
Oh, I'm sorry. The current location is at 2570 West, 4700 South. It's actually in the city of Taylorville, so I will be moving to West Valley and be in the West Valley Business District. The current zone I'm at is, of course, a business zone. As an RB zone, it's slated for smaller, quieter businesses. And I feel like my business model is worthy of request to be let in on that. As has been stated in previous times, I know Granger Medical was brought up at one point. Granger Medical is, and the only reason it was brought up at one point is because it is the exact same zone as this property I'm trying to procure. Granger Medical obviously is a lot bigger building, a lot bigger business, had a lot more customers coming in, so a lot, lot bigger than my current business model. So just, I only brought that up just to, as a reference, to show that my business model is much quieter, much smaller, and less busy as that Granger Medical. But yes, I request and hope that you guys will look this as a possibility of a small, slight move. And the reason the little change, we tried to make it so that it wouldn't affect as many parcels by making it at least a one acre parcel. There are a bunch of other RB zones within West Valley, but currently, the vast majority of them are much smaller than one acre, because that zone is no longer going to be expanding or growing. It's kind of a dying zone. So in limiting the reach and expanse of this slight change, that's why we made it to one acre or larger, because there's very few of those one acre larger zones within West Valley. One of the ideas that we want to do is very similar to a friend of mine's business that's actually in West Valley on 35th South and 5200 West. Very similar to what he has. He has a small shop. It's in and out quick like mine, as well as a few other small businesses attached to the building. That is the emissions plus there in West Valley. I will be doing something very similar to that. And at that location, as you, if you're aware of that location, is a small, quiet little place. It's not very big, and again, my business model doesn't do oil changes, so it's not messy, oily, or hazardous material, and it's not noisy, because we don't do repairs. We just check a car, which doesn't take very long, and then they send them on their way. So with that in mind, I hope that you guys will look at that and see that as a small type of business that could fit within the RB mindset as a quiet business, as my business model currently is.
This is Fred Cox. I live at 4466 Early Duke Street in West Valley City. I did have one comment. We were able to hear some comments last week from Karen Lang. She mentioned that particular project on 5200 West and 35th South. There are a couple of things that we could do, and would certainly could be part of either the conditional use approval or possibly modification to the text, is the property on 4700 South and about 3600 West that would be directly impacted by this. There's no reason that we can't have the overhead door facing away from the residence. That was something that was suggested last week. So we can do that. We can also fix it so that the overhead door does not face 4700 South. It could, for example, face the credit union. We can have a nicer door so that the door looks more like a storefront system. One of the things that the mayor mentioned last week is perception. So if this looks like a small office building, commercial building, and it happens to have an overhead door where somebody can drive a car in and out, it's not going to look like a a jiffy lube or something like that. So there is some things that we could do. We did originally come up with an idea of having two buildings. One of the buildings would basically back the residential area to the east. That area is master planned for non-retail, commercial in the future, just like this one is. And the reason we didn't propose rezoning is we didn't have enough property available for C2. We didn't think that this location was master planned or in work with the C2. And the C1, for some reason, doesn't allow this particular business, despite the fact that the building on 5200 West and 35th South is a C1 property with a development agreement. The only reason that this business was approved was it existed before. It was a pre-existing situation, non-conforming. But we tried to limit it. We couldn't come up with a better way of having the least impact on the city. Obviously, you get to determine whether or not we've done that. And the only other reason that we appealed was there was some language that was originally proposed that would impact things like jiffy loops and some of the others, because there are facilities such as a jiffy lube that does emissions, but they also change your brakes and do a lot of other service things. We were trying to create a specific use that was limited to no, no work done on the car. So it's just test only. And we didn't find anything, and so working with Jody, we proposed this, and she's been trying to be pretty helpful and neutral on this. But we didn't have a better solution, and you may have a better solution. But we haven't found another property between here and there that Eric can move into that's available, but that's, that's why we're where we are.
One other thing that I did want to add, and I'm sorry for speaking one more time. One of the concerns that one of the other council members said was they were concerned that when I do move in, that I tried to change some things to allow tenants in the other side of the building. I have no interest in that. I, I'd plan on continuing all tenants to run off the current zone plans as is. There's, they have no financial expense to to build a building and something like that. There'd just be a tenant, so I would continue to keep whatever zones and and rules are in place as RB zone for my tenants. And with that, I say we yield, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Nicole, is there anyone else to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. We'll bring it back to the council for any comments or motions or whatever.
So I know this is just a text change to the zone. I'm not sure how many other parcels this would affect. I think for this location, this use would be appropriate and fine. I don't think that the noise level would be disturbing. We have much more invasive or intrusive businesses next to residential. I think this one, if we put some restrictions on the building design, so it doesn't look like an emissions, that the building is pleasing. When I've gone and had my emissions done where I go, they pull it in, they shut the garage door, they do their thing, they open it, and I leave. So I think this is a pretty mellow business to be next to residential.
I'd like to just make a comment. I hope that Mr. Hoffman finds a place for his business, but I haven't heard anything or read anything that would compel me to make a zone change here.
It's not a zone change, it's a text change, isn't it?
Yeah, well, the modification that's requested here.
Yeah. I've just seen.
Change what's the zone needs instead of changing the zone.
I've seen uses like this in other states that you would think it's a high-end furniture gallery, not a auto repair or an emissions. The emissions, I think, is a pretty mellow use personally, so. Anyway, no other comments. I would move for approval of this resolution, which I can't get my agenda to come up, so whatever it is, Mayor.
It is ordinance 20-18.
This is Jake. Can I ask a clarifying question? Probably staffer Mr. Isaac would be able to help, but in Councilwoman Lang had mentioned that she wasn't sure how many other properties this change might impact, and I know we discussed it a little bit last week, but if I could get my memory jogged as well, maybe on what the scope or the breadth of this text change would be throughout the city, only because I actually agree with Councilwoman Lang. If it is a situation like, you know, emissions plus, which I drive by all the time, have neighbors that live right here and really don't have an issue with that. If that's what I'm envisioning, I also don't see that as being too big of a deal, but yeah, if I get some information on the scope of what this would be throughout the city, that would really help me.
Mayor, I have Jody Knapp here. If you'd like me to unmute her, she's available.
Yes.
Jody, you're good to go.
Oh, thanks, Nicole. This is Jody with Planning and Zoning. So yes, to address that, in your packet, there is basically a PowerPoint presentation, and one of the slides has the red, or the map with the red boxes and then the blue circles. So there's approximately 11 or 12 properties that could apply for this type of use. Most of these are developed. It's all the way from like the U of U clinic. There's a Head Start facility, America First Credit Union, Kelly Benson Apartments, Granger Medical. But there is a vacant parcel on 27th West and 41st South. And then this piece at 3540 West, 4700 South that the applicant is looking at. And what he mentioned is currently in Section 75 of the city code, the RB zone is not a zone anyone can apply to amend a property to. So there, you know, isn't a potential for new RB zones, but we do have about 11 or 12 that would meet the current criteria in the code.
And then, Jody, could we add building design elements to this resolution? We have to go back ordinance, or we have to go back and do that a different date, or it would be better on a case-by-case basis development agreement.
So we could do under 77105. Those are use-specific regulations for this use, so it would apply to anyone that is making an application. The use is a conditional use, but then, you know, we'd have to look at each site individually, so this is something, if this is something that you want to go on every single application, my recommendation is to put it in 77105.
And would we have or could we do that in a couple nights? I mean, a couple of weeks.
Jody, do you know the answer to that question? I don't know.
I believe if we have language we want added in there, we could just add that, but if you want us to prepare something and bring it back to you, then we could do that as well.
But we could pass this tonight and then add that on there and deal with this particular property with the development agreement at the time of, at that time?
Um, so with a development agreement, that usually happens with a rezone, and they're not requesting a rezone, so they're really, there won't be a development agreement with the conditional use.
Could I ask Jody what the feeling of the planning commission was, why they denied it?
They just felt with the RB zone being in the residential category of the city code, that it just wasn't appropriate to add an auto-related use in there, and just that they wanted to protect that residential zone and leave it how it was.
Thank you.
Dan, I think I would feel different if this was like a oil and lube change type of place or break facility, but where it's just emissions and you close the doors and put the hose on the pipe and do a reading and then just ship it out. I just don't see it in the same as most automotive uses.
Well, one of the concerns that I know I have with this process, if we want to start modifying policy and redefining what is allowed within a particular zone, why are we doing it for one business? Should we not evaluate the whole zoning structure and say, what are all the businesses that or option for someone within that zoning to do? And should we evaluate each of them? Because if we're saying that this is an acceptable one, are there similar ones that if we looked at them, we would also make changes? Usually, when we try and make these, my personal preference is to take a broader look, because this won't affect just this one piece of property. It will affect those 12 or 13 pieces that were shown on the map. And I don't know what those are like. I didn't take the time to examine those. So it's just a question of how we want to approach this.
Mayor, could I answer that one?
Sure.
Thank you. So I think that's a very good point, and to your point, that is something that we took a very hard look at when we did the big code rework in 2018. And especially with the RB zone, because we were trying to decide what this zone was going to be, and do we keep it in the residential category, or does it go into the commercial category? And as well as with that big discussion about, do we want the RB zone as an option anymore in 75? So that, that was thought through pretty significantly, and so it was determined to keep it in the residential category. And then we took a look at that whole table and went down all the uses, and it just made more sense at that time to keep it in residential and not add it to that commercial section in 76 and open it up to those broader uses. And then, yeah, that was just what we did when we looked at it in 2018.
So Jody, in 2018, were they still doing safety and emissions or just emissions?
Um, I, so the use itself has just always been in auto service. So we never, this is new to have it be its own category, so yeah, I don't believe, I'm not too sure. I can't remember when that law changed, but yeah, it's, it's just emissions has always been in auto service.
Yeah, and I think when Yeah, and I think when we dig deeper into auto services, I think different industries change some. And I think that's why the ebb and flow that we just need to continually kind of look at each one. I mean, there's so many new things that come online all the time that we had not even anticipated being a use where the emissions, the safety's out of it now. There's not that much of taking tires off, taking, you know, putting them back on to do all the safety inspections. It's just emissions. And I think that's what separates it in my mind from how it was a few years ago.
And I'd also say that, you know, this was a council decision a few years ago. It was a policy decision at that time. If we want to change policy, we're certainly free to do so.
I have a question for Jody. I'd like to hear the list of what's currently allowed in the RB zone. Could you, could you give us that list?
Yes. So as far as like the commercial related uses, so community uses are allowed in any zone. You could have a daycare or preschool, a daycare in conjunction with a church, a financial institution, so like a bank. Let's see. Nursing home, medical dental office, a professional office. And then the rest are more residential type uses. Oh, and then a veterinary hospital.
From that list and the way this, the house that's next to this property, I just don't see this type of use fitting in to that, to that kind of zone. So I would, I would deny this.
Okay, currently, we have a motion, but no second. Just to remind you of where we're at in the process. If there is no second, the motion dies for lack of a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny this application. Is that the right word? Ordinance twenty-eighteen.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
No.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Uh, hold on.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Resolution twenty-fourty-three. This is an amendment to an agreement we currently have for Energy Efficiency Upgrade Management Services. This is an addition to a contract of about two million dollars. Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars will be this addition. This is at the Maverick Center where energy efficiencies were taking place. The contract was let, the bid was accepted. And then, as they got into some of the structural bases of what was going on, they discovered other things that had problems that needed to be resolved in order to move this forward. So with those changes, in order to complete the plan as originally designed, this additional contract modification is required for this Resolution twenty-fourty-three. With that introduction, then, to the council.
I would move for approval of Resolution twenty-fourty-three.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? I heard something there, but I'm not sure if that was a I think it was just some background noise. Okay. So seeing no further comments to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That completes our agenda. We do not have a need for a closed session. We appreciate your work in this electronic meeting and making it come together. And unless there's any further comments from the council.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. No no's, so the ayes are unanimous. With that, thank you very much. And we'll see you all next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole and Eric.
Have a good evening.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you.